I can't. I wish I could show you the plan.
If you please take your seat so we can start.
When we had nineteen down, that was a disaster. You can't, think about August, you can't run.
Please take your seat so we can start.
Think I could be really, you know, and we had it all in nineteen, nineteen, it was bad. I mean, dangerous.
I now call to order the regulation session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen at six thirty P M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahuza's.
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Kikta.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Melody Kidd from the Crystal Beach Community Church. If you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegion.
Pray with me, please. Gracious God, we thank you for the time of refreshment that comes with this rain. We ask, Lord, that you give us direction and wisdom and discernment as decisions are made for the city of Tarpon Springs. We thank you for life's blessings and we thank you for the grace in which we stand this day. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our commission meeting. Thank you for being here tonight. We're going to start with public comments of the items that will not be discussed tonight. If anyone has any comments, please come forward to the podium. Please state your name and your address for the record. You'll be given four minutes. Thank you.
Jean Hungaville, Tarpon Springs Chamber of Commerce. I'm the president and C E O. I just wanted to enter into the record, something that we all are aware of is that the Tarpon Springs has been nominated, was nominated and has been awarded the best historic small town in the United States for two thousand eighteen. I want to thank everyone here who helped with that. I know, Mark, you walked around every single morning reminding everybody to vote. I'm sure everyone else did as well. It makes a huge difference. One of the things I worked with with my previous chamber was this kind of an initiative, and we started this in January. After we got into the top twenty, then was when we were able to go to work here. The, after the top twenty selections were made, there was an expert committee of travelers and writers from USA Today. And once we launched this campaign, it moved back and forth and back and forth. It went from first to third, fifth, back to third. And people were paying attention, and I really do appreciate all of the votes. I will tell you, as in a little aside, most of you know that I moved from the eastern shore of Virginia. Karen Rorden, who is the Williamsburg Chamber President and C E O, when she came into the top ten, said, look out, when I beat you, I don't want a bucket of sponges sent to me. They came in fourth. So I'm, I'm really, really pleased with that. I think most of you saw the top ten, Tarpon Springs on top, Natchitoches, Louisiana, Haddonfield, New Jersey, Williamsburg, Virginia, and Natchez, Mississippi were the top five. The announcement was made on Friday. I got the call from USA Today on Wednesday and had a really difficult time keeping it a secret for a couple of days. So anyway, thank you for everybody who helped with that. This gives us serious bragging rights. We will be working with the city on some signage for this, that we will be able to keep up for quite some time. And I'm in the process of negotiating with USA Today on how much of the logo digitally and in print that we can use. And it will be then available citywide for businesses as well as the city to be able to use this in all of our advertising.
Thank you. That's great news. We are very, very honored and glad that we have, we are now the, the best city. We always knew that. In the nation, right?
Yeah.
But yes, we are small, but we have a lot of history and a lot of character in Tarpon Springs. And thank you for your efforts and thank everyone in Tarpon Springs for voting. Do we have any other public comments? Do you hear none? Okay. We are now going to the proclamation. The first proclamation that we have is on Memorial Day. The City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation would ask, Memorial Day is our nation solemn reminder that freedom is never free. Is a moment of reflection on the noble sacrifices of those who gave the last measure of devotion in service of our ideals and in the defense of our nation. And would ask, on Memorial Day, we pay tribute to those brave Americans who laid down their lives to defend our freedom by decorating their graves with stars and stripes and proudly fly the American flag, the beautiful American flag to honor their memory. Would ask today and every day, let us remember the servicemen and women we have lost and let us honor them. But dedicated ourselves to strength, to strengthen our nation, promise with love, grace and reflection. Let us honor our fallen fellow Americans. And now therefore, I Chris Alahuza's by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, to hereby proclaim May twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen as Memorial Day. We will mail this proclamation. And is any commission comments on this item? Is any public comments on this item? We hear none? Thank you. We go to the next item.
I just want to remind everybody that Memorial Day, Monday, the Elks Lodge hosts, there's a service at Craig Park and then the Elks Lodge will be there hosting lunch. And it's a nice, nice service for everybody to attend. We have, the crowd gets bigger and bigger every year, so please come out if you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kikta. You want to read the next proclamation on National Safe Voting Week?
City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation, whereas for nearly ninety million Americans, voting continues to be a popular recreational activity. From coast to coast and everywhere in between, people are taking to the water and enjoying time boating, sailing, paddling and fishing. And whereas during National Safe Voting Week, the U S Coast Guard and its federal, state and local safe boating partners encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. And whereas safe boating begins with preparation, the Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for seventy percent of all boating accidents and that life jackets could prevent more than eighty percent of boating fatalities. And whereas National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters so that they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water. Now therefore, I Commissioner Susan Kikta, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen as National Safe Boating Week. And urge all who boat to practice safe boating habits and wear a life jacket at all times while boating. And I believe Joan Jennings is here with the Coast Guard Auxiliary and Steve Raskin is the flotilla commander. They're here to accept. Thank you for helping keeping our waterways safe.
Do you want to say a few words?
And while Joan's walking up, I just want to say my nephew just graduated from the Coast Guard. He just got back from boot camp and has been stationed in Isla Marada, so we're very happy for that.
Congratulations to him.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd just like to thank the mayor and the board of commissioners for the proclamation. Tarpon is such a city that's bounded by so much water. Water safety is of particular interest in this community. The Coast Guard recently provided a safety patrol for the Rotary-sponsored Peter T. Assamack Fishing Tournament. And while they were out on patrol, they actually had two search and rescues, which was quite an accomplishment. So I think, you know, the boating public really needs to be aware of safety. One of the things that's kind of a personal pet peeve of mine is seeing people out on the water with overloaded boats, especially with small children. Small children should have life jackets, as should your pets. So please be aware of being safe on the water. And I also want to acknowledge the wonderful contribution of the Tarpon Springs and the police department in also helping us out with keeping people safe on the water. Thank you.
Thank you. I personally want to thank the auxiliary for providing safety to our recreation boaters. If you'll remember, several years ago, we had a bed accident on a river and we had lost Michael Bilares, who was a good friend of mine and former commissioner and a very respectable person here in Tarpon Springs. So thank you for doing that. Are there any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Here, none? Thank you. Commissioner Seber, if you please read your proclamation on the National Public Works Week.
City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewer, streets and public buildings. And whereas the health, safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs encourages its citizens to acquaint themselves with public works and recognize the contributions which public works professionals make each day to our health, safety, comfort and quality of life. Now therefore, I Commissioner Reyes Seber, by virtue of the authority vested in the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, to hereby proclaim the week of May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen as National Public Works Week. And Tom Function, our public works director, will be receiving this.
Say a few words, Tom? Thank you, thank you. Any commission comments?
Thank you, Tom.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here, none? Thank you. The next item on the agenda is another proclamation for the Ahaba Day. The City of Tarpon Springs, Florida proclamation would ask, Ahaba members are proud of the contributions of the ancient Greeks gifting to the Western civilization. As Americans will share many of the values put forward by them. Civil responsibility, philanthropy, education, family and the ideals of democracy. And would ask, the Ahaba family works as a unit towards the fulfillment of a common mission. Together with three affiliated organizations, Daughters of Penelope, Maids of Athena and Sons of Pericles have contributed over one billion dollars donation projects throughout the history. And would ask, a component of Ahaba mission is to create awareness of the principles of Hellenism in society. And would ask, these principles include a commitment to community, freedom and democracy. And would ask, the preservation and promotion of these ideals is where Ahaba has and always will be deeply committed. And would ask, the City of Tarpon Springs recognized the American Hellenic Education Progressive Association in Tarpon Springs and has existed since nineteen oh two, currently residing in the Ahaba home at twenty West Tarpon Avenue. And now therefore, I Chris Alahuza's by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, to hereby proclaim May twentieth, two thousand eighteen as the Ahaba Day. And I'd like to invite the Ahaba members to come up here to receive the proclamation. If you all come up here, if you all come, that's fine. No, you want him to do that. Okay, Tim. Then why don't you be the first? Okay, congratulations. Okay. I didn't know they have a basketball.
Then they get known as being volunteered.
Thank you. Tim, you want to say a few words?
Tim Kaphalas, the president of Chapter Sixteen, George Washington. I want to just announce that, and thank you for the proclamation, but I want to announce that we, we named our, the people that got the scholarships for two thousand eighteen on, we publicly announced it on Sunday at church. We had, originally, we were going to give four one thousand dollar scholarships. We were so moved by some of the applicants that many of the chair people made some calls and we came up with another thousand to, to offset the, to have a fifth one. So the following five people will each be receiving a thousand dollar scholarship for their college or where they decide to go to school. And one is Aleni Lambrianos, Demetrius Mihas, Demis Sekoulas, Elias Tomaras and Catherine Zeronius. We were very honored to have them apply for scholarships. They all had, I believe, three, six and better. Two of the recipients were joint enrolled, enrolled in college and in high school and completed two years of college while they were in high school. So we're very honored that they were, were wanting to work with us. In fact, the, one of the recipients, Aleni Lambrianos, her grandfather, guess it would be her grandfather or great grandfather, was sponsored to come to the United States by Ahaba many years ago. So that was a very nice gesture that she, she's done. I want to thank you and hopefully we'll see you at our dinner so we can do this next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments? Are there any public comments on this item? The Ahabas want to say something? No? Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a presentation. Rose Hill Cemetery, National Register of Historic Places. We received, we received a certificate from the State of Florida honoring the Rose Hill Cemetery for being placed in the National Register of the Historic Places. So I'm having the certificate here and I'm going to be reading. It says the State of Florida. This is to certify that in recognition of the historic significance, Rose Hill Cemetery has been officially listed in the National Register of Historic Places effective the seventeenth day of March, two thousand seventeen by the National Park Service, Department of the Interior, Washington, D C. So I'd like to ask all the, the members of the Rose Hill Cemetery to accept this certificate if it's, it's a very, it's a big honor for all of us here in Tarpon Springs. Any Dabs to be a president, by the way? She'll be accepting that here. Okay. Please tell, please. All right. Yeah, let me, let me go around.
Good evening. My name is Alfred Quarterman and I'd like to thank the city mayor and the city manager and all commissioners who have worked with us so closely to make this a success. Those people who worked so hard and getting this national register, I don't see some of the faces now, but I'd like to extend a thank you to those people. And it wasn't easy. Now what we have is a place where schools are coming out because it's part of history. And a lot of students have come along asking questions and we're happy to be a part of the city that we can answer them for because city has been good and it's still been good to us. I won't hold you because I'm known for, I get a captive audience, I don't know when to quit. So I'm going to stop before we get started. Let this, the Ahaba say something.
I'm Annie Dabs and I would like to thank, first of all, the National Park Service, also the mayor and the commissioners. It was a long nomination process for Rose Cemetery Association to acquire this flag. It's an honor after we have received it and now we can work even harder to provide the continued care that Rose Cemetery need and also to preserve the rich history of Rose Cemetery. Beginning with our earliest celdas back in the early middle eighteen hundreds, we have a lot of history. And we do want to preserve that because we want to pay tribute to those who have made a contribution to the city of Tarpon Springs and the nation. And we thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any commission comments, Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes, thank you. And as always, when, when we discuss Rose Hill, I, I want to thank all that are involved, all, all, all the volunteers, Mrs. Dabs. I know that, I know that, that Rotary has a large hand in it too. These people deserve a dignified place where their, where their, where their grave sites are and we have to honor their heritage to our town as much as, 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 as anyone else. Whenever we, as, as, as a city, they'll, they'll have a chance to recognize them. I, I think that, that, that's, that's always a good thing and I'm very happy that they're now on the national level of, you know, though, though registered for that, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I also like to congratulate, to thank everyone involved for working and volunteering on the cemetery. The Rose Hill Cemetery represents the history of Tarpon Springs and the lives of some of the most prominent people in Tarpon to help develop the city that we have today. So I want to thank you all for working on the cemetery. Are there any public comments on this item? Do we have any public comments on this item? Here, now? Well, thank you very much. The next item on the, on the agenda is the addendum number one, update Ankle River dredge project. Bob Robertson is ready to give us an update.
Good evening. I'm Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. City manager asked me to provide a brief update on the status of the Ankle River Dredge project and do that here for you. At this time, it's my understanding that the, that federal funding has been made available for the project, but the Army Corps does not yet know the exact amount. I've been in contact with Congressman Gus Billerakis's staff and sought their help in clarifying the federal funding amount as well as the project timeframe. And they're working on our behalf on those items now. Meanwhile, the Army Corps continues to work on the design and permitting. I participate in periodic project conference calls with the Army Corps to stay informed on the status of the project. I don't have a project schedule as of yet, but things do continue to move forward on the project. That's really about all I have right now and I will continue to keep the board updated as the project progresses. And I'm here for questions.
Mr. Robertson, thank you for the update. Also want to thank Mr. LeCource and you for working so close on this project. I've been talking to Congressman Billerakis about the project constantly, not only for this project, but another one for trying to bring dental clinic here in Tarpon Springs as well. So we'll be talking a lot and hopefully we'll get it done. When you're ready to, for me to meet with Senator Bill Nelson or Rubio, please let me know and I'd be glad to do that.
Will do. Thank you.
Are there any commission comments? Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes, thank you, Bob. So when there was talk of this, you know, we got, there's, there was a lot of back and forth that we got pushed up because of Irma and there was going to be a dredge, bring us to pre Irma levels, then Gus was going to try and do a change order, get a full dredge. So is, is that kind of just a mystery right now? Or do we, is there going to be a dredge for the pre Irma levels or just kind of unknown? Is that, they, they were talking like, well, that's going to be this summer and, yeah.
Well, the Army Corps continues to communicate to me that the intent is to do a full dredge.
Correct.
And one of the things that Gus and his staff are working to clarify is that very issue is to make sure that we are getting not just hurricane restoration, but pre hurricane, which is what we want, the, the, essentially the twenty-year dredge. So that is a very important issue that we're working on.
But we don't have any kind of schedule yet or timeline or anything?
Not yet.
Okay, I know there was, I know Liz Hito's, the chief of staff, had mentioned we were in the continuing, whatever you call those things, that they keep the government open with. There were several of them and we were in the budget for one of them that happened. I, 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 I forget when it was, but I think that was the funding for the, for the pre Irma dredge. So, okay, was I thought, they admit, they, they had talked about the summer. Obviously, we would see action. It was going to take place this summer, I assume, by now. So I know there was some boats that were, there was some Army Corps boats seen in the river. But from the intel that I got from, from people in town was it didn't really do much. It was just kind of almost like samples they were taking or something or just moving some stuff around. So, I mean, I guess we just continue to, to, ju, 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 just, just sit and wait. So there was sure what the next step is besides, I guess we have to continue to lobby harder. And, you know, because every year we delay, you know, more boats can't get in and that's going to hurt that economy there more and more. Also, we've talked about here on this board. So I think we should have updates at, at least quarterly, I think, Mark. And not just so much for our purposes, but I think that'll help in the communication loop with Billerakis and him ever. loop with Bilirakis and him or else, that they know that we're... This is not just a one-time thing we bring up whenever we feel like it, it's a continuing update we get, and being an election year and all, that might help put a little bit more emphasis on this project. So I think we should, you know, at least have an update in three months or sooner if something happens, I think.
Probably at least every three months. I say if we finally get a breakthrough of this knowledge and stuff, we'll obviously come with one sooner when it's more clear to us, and we got the timetable. The first one will probably be sooner than three months, hopefully.
Okay.
Mayor? I agree, Vice Mayor, and thanks for your diligence and staying on top of this. I think even sooner would be better to get updates. We have the money from the state now, so let's not drop the ball and keep moving. So, yeah, the sooner we can hear an update and keep our pressing to get this started, the better. So thanks, Bob, for your diligence and staying on top of it.
Glad to do it. You're welcome.
Yeah, I do. Thank you for the update on that, Bob. I do have just a note of clarification. So the funds were approved then for the dredge as a whole that you're aware of?
That's my understanding, yeah, but it's the amount that we don't know, and whether it's, as the vice mayor said, whether it's for the Irma restoration or pre-Irma restoration. We're trying to get that clarified right now.
Okay. So it's already been approved, but we don't know what has been approved?
Yeah.
We're just waiting here back on what it actually is. Okay, because I have a concern.
That's why I asked for the congressman's help, because I need some...
Yeah, and I've sent a note, I think, to you and Mark at one point, because we were putting our eggs in the basket with our state senator and state representative, but then the funds didn't make it through the governor the first time, made it through the second time. So I was trying to figure out, is there other congressmen or other people on these Army Corp boards that we need to reach out to, to lobby, to encourage that this gets pushed up instead of just going to Congressman Bilirakis, instead of just one person? Do we target multiple people, or what's the approach on that?
We could, and as the mayor offered, we could enlist the help of senators Rubio and Nelson. But, and I think maybe what you're thinking of is the state funding.
Right.
But that has already been appropriated and available.
I understand that. But it was a good example because we didn't get it the first time.
I apologize.
Yeah, and that's what I was trying to make a point of, is that we made an attempt, but we didn't get all the way through to the governor the first time. We got through the second time, but it would be a bummer to see that we didn't get the full dredge, because maybe we could reach out to additional elected officials that are in the...
Right now Congressman Bilirakis is our best hope and stuff. We are ready to let you know if there's others we have to reach out to, but the way of the world in Washington right now, that's our best hope to get this through. So we'll let you know if that changes, and they know that we need to start contacting or meeting with other people, we'll let you know.
Absolutely.
Right now, it's not, but when it comes, we'll let you know.
I just... I know it's not too long ago, we had the same conversation at the state level, so I'm just trying to say, from a proactive approach, we need to start reaching out for other people as well, other than just his office, because that's something that we did on the state level, and then it turned out very well the first time. That just seems like an opportunity there, and I appreciate the work that you guys are doing. I know there's a lot involved with this. I just don't want to miss this opportunity because it's a very important part for this town. Thank you again for the update.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, the commission comment? No. Are there any public comments on this item?
Atheta Sardulia, 634 East Orange. I appreciate all the questions here this evening, Vice Mayor, Commissioners Carr and Seber, and our mayor, of course. Would it be possible to have monthly updates? Just to get it... Just so they know that we're really anxious, we are concerned about the condition. Is that realistic? That's my only comment.
Okay. Thank you.
I will tell you on that, though, that if you watch the website, again, sometimes we don't have a lot to tell, but he knows on the project section of our website, we will keep all correspondences and everything that comes in will be on there, so the citizens can watch that. Again, if something major comes, we got major word, we'll bring back to you, but we'll bring back to you sooner than the time, so.
Are there any other public comments on this item? No? Thank you, Bob. We are now going to the consent agenda. Number six is the attorney fees. Eight, TRSC and Dynog invoice 56067. Number seven is the award bid number 180115 BRS Traffic Control Devices. Are there any items that you'd like to discuss, to pull?
I just want to talk about number seven.
Seven? You want that to be pulled?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any public comments on item number six? Any commission comments on item number six? I need a motion for the item number six, the attorney fees.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzus?
Yes. We are now going to the item number seven, which is the bid number 180115 BRS Traffic Control Devices. Commission call.
Thank you, Mayor. Wanted to... A couple items on this. I want to say thank you to the city manager and the police chief for bringing this forward. Both of them have reminded me that this is due to a situation that we learned during Irma, when US 19 had traffic signals that were out, and they had a hard time moving the flow of traffic safely. And I thank you to the police chief again for detailing out the detailed information behind all the items in here. It's imperative that we are the furthest north city in Pinellas County, and it's good to make sure that traffic is flowing safety, safely on 19, and that there's no accidents during a time of emergency when it powers out. The one question I did have, just for clarification, I know we touched on it earlier, chief and city manager, is that we do have message boards that we have on Tarpon Avenue and Pinellas Avenue, and I just wanted to... I know those are used for when events are going on. They're not the most tasteful message boards. Could they be used in this situation as well, instead of buying some of these boards, or are they too large?
We worked out a whole traffic plan for these major roadways in the event of a hurricane or a power outage or any natural disaster that could shut down a roadway. In our plan, the ones that you refer to could possibly be used, but it's not preferable because the ones that we have here, based on the totality of this plan, we can put, you know, if you got 19 shut down from Klossman Road to Pasco County line, we need message signs in the middle. We have a whole planned device that we can make 19 pretty much self-regulating. If we had to use the one that Mr. Functions have, the four of them, we could, but they're not in our plan right now. We need the ones that we have outlay here. All this equipment that you see before you in group one, two, and three is a part of this whole resource plan to make alternate 19, 19, Tarpon Avenue, and Klossman Road functional in the event of a major catastrophe, so we can move traffic. It's essential that we get this stuff.
Thanks. I just want to, again, point it out, this is a... These are concerns that the police chief brought up and the city manager brought up after Irma, and thank you for bringing this forward and being proactive before the next natural disaster emergency that we have in Tarpon Springs.
Yep.
I don't have any further questions. I was just wanting to learn more about the message boards.
Yeah. You know, this is nice to have all this. I hope we never have to use it.
Right.
But, you know, safety comes first. Any commission comments on this item, item number seven? Any public comments on this number seven? Here none, and roll call, please.
We need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzus?
Yes, thank you. We are now going to the special consent agenda. Item number eight is to authorize execution of school resource officer contract with the Pinellas County School Board. Staff report? Mr. Licouris?
I'm gonna let Bob go ahead and start on that. He's worried what I'm gonna say tonight, so for the technical aspect of it, I'm gonna let Bob start with it, and then I may have some things to say about the state of things in school resource officers.
Thank you. As y'all know, as I outlined in this memo, on March 9, Governor Rick Scott signed into law the Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School Public Safety Act. This act basically requires us in one of three ways to provide security of all of our schools, public and charter, but we don't have any charter schools. The best way that city manager and I know this community feels this way, and I think this board definitely feels this way, the best way for us to do this is putting our own police officers in these schools. They're highly trained. We've been doing it in the elementary schools with one SRO that rotates between all three. There's also a mentoring component involved in that, but we believe for the safety of our schools and our community, the best way to do this is to basically cover all of our schools with SROs. I have before you a contract that Mark and I worked out with Pinellas County School District. It's a three-year contract because we wanted some certainty in this contract. It's got a me-too clause in it that if any of the SRO costs or what they pay for SROs goes up, we will automatically get that increase. It also has some capital cost reimbursement built into it in the event that, for some reason, they cancel. But in all of our discussions, in my discussions with the Pinellas County School Board Police Chief, they are extremely grateful that we're stepping up to do this. They want to support us doing this. I know Gulfport's doing it. Some cities aren't, and that's their choice. I'm not here to really comment about that. I'm just here to comment about what we feel is best to do for our city. As you can see, they're funding us at $58,000 for six SROs. They actually gave us a little more money for the second SRO that we have at the high school, so they're going to a full funding model. I left the spreadsheet at your stations that kind of outline all the costs. It's about a half a million a year. I think it's actually $541,000. The school board funds, I believe... Commissioner Carr, may I look at yours a second? I just don't have mine in front of me. Thank you.
64%.
Yeah, they fund about 64% of the program, about $348,000, and we're funding about 36%. So we feel that this is the best way to go. As you know, you already authorized us to hire two more police officers. You increased the strength of our department. We have all those officers hired, processed, onboard with the last two, starting at the end of this month. We plan to be ready by July 1st to cover all of these schools, and we will do it well. So that's what you have before you, and we're asking for you to approve this contract tonight so we can move forward.
Great job, chief.
You know, in this, you know, we had talked about before that it seemed to be that everybody was gonna get together, we're gonna do it, we're gonna get it done for this year, and then, you know, work on how we could get more funding. That's kind of changed a little, but I'm sure you've seen the newspapers, and I'm sure you see slowly, one by one, cities all of a sudden dropping out of this, backing down and telling the school boards that is their responsibility to do. And as a result, as they fall away, and as right now, as far as I know, is gonna be Tarpon Springs, Gulfport, and probably Pinellas Park, all I can tell you after all these years is, you know, I want our schools and our kids to be protected by our officers, and how some of these communities are going forward and not taking that on, especially the contracts are good contracts for now. I know it doesn't pay for everything, but I think the school boards come through and done that. I've watched some of these police chiefs stand up there at the conferences, and I see the look on their faces, and although they're going another way, I know in my heart that some of these police chiefs don't think that the way their city's going is right and that the way we're going on. We've been blessed with this commission. As I said way back when we talked about elementary school SROs 15 years ago, however long it was, and we finally, you know, obviously the school board at that time kind of laughed at it and didn't think anything of it, but, you know, we knew as police chiefs back then after 9/11 and stuff, we knew of Al Qaeda, and we found their plans, and one of their biggest things of how you attack America is you hit the smaller towns and you hit schools and their kids. That was part of their battle plans back there. But besides all this stuff with, you know, attacks and terrorist attacks and stuff, our police officers need to be in the elementary schools because that's where they form a bond with the kids. Maybe when we have a lot of this stuff going on in the country with police officers and what's gone with them, you know, if they got to know. We knew a long time ago that not only we need to be in the high school, and we needed to be in middle school, but we needed to be in the elementary schools as mentors, as role models, and that is our philosophy. The only time we got out of this business was probably, I was a sergeant, and we got out of the high school SRO because they told us we could do nothing with the kids, nothing. We were security guards, and we were just standing there, we were not interacting with anything with the kids. And we told the high school, who was under directions of the school board then, that they could hire security guards then, because our officers weren't gonna be there. This is real important, and this community has come through and done this, and I hate to see what these other cities are doing. I hope there's some change of hearts, because a lot of these cities we see around here put a whole lot of money into a lot of things, and they're not gonna put in into their police being in their schools and guarding their children, and I just think that's a shame. So we've always done the right thing. Why it doesn't cost so much is we've already had one person that we've paid for in the elementary school, and now we're gonna get this $56,000 funding for. We put the second person at the high school, and why it was partially funded is they had a security guard in there. We said, well, wait, just give us the security guard money, $26,000, we'll supplement the rest. We want a second officer to high school. So we've been ahead of the curve on there, and I hope some people look at us, and the cities that are doing it be the model, and they do the right thing. We start seeing them going to the cities, because I think this is an important investment of your money to the youth of this community, and the community does, and I'm glad the commissions of the past, how many years I can remember, have always supported us, supported us with kids, supported us in cops and kids, and supported our program in the schools. So I'm gonna be proud to stand up in this county if we are one of three agencies that does this, that Tarpon Springs is protecting our kids with their officers, that we know how they're trained, and they're ready for anything, to put their lives on the line for anything that goes on there. So thank you for giving us the officers. As I said, the chief's got them hired, and we're gonna be ready to go when it goes. So I think it's a plus for this community.
Mr. Licouris, I couldn't... You said that so well, and chief, thank you for your efforts. I believe that it's our responsibility as a community, as a city of Tarpon Springs, to provide safety to all the schools, and especially to the elementary school, because that's actually the future of our nation. We must provide the best security that's possible, not to get a guard, but if you have professional-trained policemen to provide that service that is so necessary. And it's actually a win-win situation that we have, because we providing the service that is so necessary, but also we're gonna be getting... It's only gonna cost us 36% of the cost. 64% will be funded by the county, by the Pinellas County School Board. So I think it's very fair to provide a specialized, trained officers to go there and protect our kids. I think it's something that we owe to our new generation, so I'm in favor for that. And thank you both for doing, bringing this forward to us.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any commission comments? Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Mark and chief, for your comments. I agree with every single one of them. And as I said when we first talked about this, is that, you know, I think it's insanity that we, not just Tarpon, but as a nation, have not put the best-trained people, being police officers, in every single school possible. I think that's something, no matter what you believe about guns or gun control or why these shootings are happening, wherever, that's the best frontline defense, to have police officers in those schools that don't back down. So I'm very proud, once again, that Tarpon Springs is continuing, though continuing to lead, and I'm in the county on many fronts, and especially this. I'll be careful to not judge too harshly my colleagues and other commissions down county that chose differently, but, you know, when it comes to budgeting, I'm very conservative, but the price of the lives of our students is priceless, and whatever it costs to keep these trained SROs in these schools, I am 100% for. You know, God forbid something were to happen here in Tarpon Springs. I want to know that, at least on my end, that I did everything I could to make sure those schools were safe, and I think that this is the most practical, immediate step forward that we can do as a commission to secure our schools. So again, thank you to Chief Licouris. Not Chief Licouris, that's a Freudian slip there. Freudian slip. I always tell him he's city manager of the curse, not, you know, Chief Licouris, that's why. But to chief coach and to city manager of the curse for putting this together, and again, making us a leader in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commission comments? Commission Kikta?
Thank you. And again, I want to thank you, chief, for bringing this forward to us. This is such an important matter.
Thank you. And again, I want to thank you, Chief, for bringing this forward to us. This is such an important matter. It is unfortunate that society has come to this. But we're lucky that we are able to put some, some police officers, extra police officers into our schools and keep our children safe because it is part of our responsibility here as a commission to make sure our community is safe. So I'm happy that we're able to do that, and we are getting some relief from the county with costs. So I think this is, this is really just great that we're able to do this. And I, and it's too bad that others within our county don't see the benefit of protecting their, you know, their community. So again, this is wonderful. I know we discussed a lot of the issues at our last meeting about what some of these SROs do during the summertime and whatnot. So we have all that worked out and.
Correct.
Okay. So again, thank you very much. I appreciate this.
Thank you. Commission Seber.
Yes, I want to, of course, I support what my colleagues say. I'm not going to repeat everything, but thank you, Chief. And yes, I think it's very important that we are responsible and worry about the safety of our children. And I hope that we will be a model for some of the other cities in our community, and they will do the same. Now, you said they will be fully trained by July first, so they, will they be in the schools by July first?
Well, that's when the contract kicks in. But yeah, they, they have to be into the schools in the beginning of August. We start doing all that stuff. But they have to go through training, have to go, so they have to go to the SRO school. So we're getting all the logistics out of the way, but when, when we're, when school starts, we would be ready there. They'll be on campus. They usually get there two weeks before. I don't want to gain too much of that, but we'll be ready to go.
Training that you're there doing.
Yeah, we'll be ready to go.
And again, these are, the officers that go out there are officers we already have, the.
Right.
The new officers will take place. So, so we're a little bit ahead on that. We don't have to, we don't have to do that. So we'll be ahead of things.
Glad we were able to hire the extra guys for this.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Commission Carr.
Thanks, Mayor. So just for clarification, we've already given approval to hire these officers. This is an agreement that we're, the city's going into place with the Pinellas County School Board for reimbursement of part of it.
Correct.
Thank you. So it is my understanding, too, when it was explained to me about this, this safety act that was passed, that the school board and the local municipalities are to share in the cost together. And that it's not the school board's responsibility to take the full cost. So I do understand, and I'm glad that the school board came forward with the majority of the reimbursement for these salaries. So I think that's encouraging to see. So thanks again for bringing this back.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item?
Peter Lax, five one four Ashland Avenue. Telling remarks that you made, Mark, about one of the initial motives of this program was to familiarize the kids with police officers, which was one of our big intents in putting an officer to rotate through the elementary schools and also in the middle school at the time. So I'm proud of y'all carrying on this tradition and expanding it. And I care less about what Largo, Cluwater, and the rest of them are doing. We're doing the right thing. Now, in the meantime, I'm concerned about the whole overall aspect, and the chief maybe, and city people and governments can be concerned also about the need of a massive influx of officers. And I know there needs to be ramp-ups, and I'm not going to question ours, but in general, of putting a lot of new officers in schools who may have maybe military backgrounds or other types of backgrounds, but aren't totally prepared in dealing with kids. So I would like to see that there is some kind of training or sessions working with age-appropriate professionals, whether they're social workers or work with SPC and set up a training program for SROs where you get maybe new, you know, something to expand on just having an officer there. Because part of what you want to build is trust. And it starts early, and if you can build some continuity in your SRO program where you're not bringing in a new person every time, and you build some stability, and they communicate with themselves as they see students mature and working with counselors, because they've got to be the front eyes for seeing these students like what happened in Santa Fe. He got guns from his father's cabinet. They weren't the AR-15s. He built some pressure cooker pipe bombs. That's not something, you know, so you build that relationship, and the chief knows what I'm talking about. But you're going to have to get your officers properly trained and have them work with the counselors to find mechanisms to try to get other students to trust our officers, to say, hey, Jimmy's been acting a little weird. Somehow can we talk to the counselor? How? You've got to set up this network because that is going to be crucial in stopping something. When the guy walks in with the gun, it's all reactive instead of proactive. So that would be my suggestion to our board, to our staff, as some aspects to make this a safer community for our schools. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. Do we have any other comments on this item? Mr. Delago says something that's so important. The SRO, they must get special training, and they do. And I'd like to ask, excuse me, city manager or the chief, to tell us about that.
First of all, I've been chief.
Yeah, I could take a stab at.
Let me, let me, let me do it first, just real fast, because it's kind of the history of what we've done. Yes, obviously, in a situation like that, the chief is going to have the best trained officers that are not only in the schools but outside the schools. So if any event happens that they come in and can do the police side of a controversy. But the other end, and what I've been preaching about for twelve, fifteen or more years about our officers in there, it's the training that, that a former commissioner Delago has talked about. When we put them in the schools, we want them to get to know the kids. We want them to realize problems. We want them, because it's so important, not just dealing with the situation when it's happening, but hopefully be in a situation where you can see it, you can get kids help, you can relate with it with them. You can get kids to tell you, hey, something's wrong with Johnny, and you need to look at it to get that trust and confidence. So, yeah, the chief's going to do all the technical training, and they're going to be trained to take somebody down and, and everything else. But the most important, and this is why, the main emphasis of why I say I really don't want the schools, just the security guard or the hired ones from there, because they're probably going to be people ex-militar, ex-law enforcement, but, but do they have that training that we're going to demand from our officers out in the school to know the kids, be with the kids, to recognize things, to gain their confidence, to look for the problems, to try to find the proper help for them and stuff? So you're absolutely right, and that's the reason why we want to do it, because we want to ensure the people in our schools are trained in both the technical law enforcement way and the way to work, mold, role models, and help the kids or help identify problems ahead of time. Go ahead, Chief, you span on that.
Your turn.
Obviously, like City Manager said, it's a process. All, all of our SROs are seniors, seasoned officers. They're all trained. Some of them have to go through the training. But we did the selection process. You have to match the right SRO with the right school. Every school has different needs. Every school has different challenges. We are well aware of that. And the officers that are going into the elementary schools have been selected based on the school they're going in and what attributes and what skills they bring to the table. So the compliment that we're going to have in the elementary schools, in addition to the ones we have at the high school and the middle school, are bar none awesome, not only for security, but for mentoring, working with the kids, working with the counselors. We've been doing it forever. We have a model that we've been working off. So I'm very confident that these officers are going to do a phenomenal job. And again, it's not only security. City manager here on it right and left. It is really connecting with these kids because they have so many needs today and working with the school, working with the counselors and the principal. So I'm very confident we have the right people that are going to go out there. So we'll, we'll keep you updated on it.
Commission Seber.
Yeah, what you just said is, is so right on. As a former counselor, I worked in many different schools, and you do have the different personalities of the SROs that, that fit with the schools. And those SROs know those kids, and they, they know when to do something preventative. So it's so important to, to have those SROs that are there that get to know the kids, that are mentors, and, and do any type of prevention that's necessary. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other commission common questions?
I've got a quick one. I know one of the topics also is we don't have any charter schools currently in the city of Tarpon Springs Incorporated portion. Do we have a plan at all, or has that been discussed, if anything happens in the near future? Because I would imagine with the amount of funding going towards charter schools, that there might be some new charter schools that might pop up?
That's in the talking process now. Yeah, you know, that's a little bit down the road to, you know, we don't have to deal with it now, but we're going to be seeing and talking about what they're doing with charter schools in the county, and, and we'll be looking at that in case the opportunity, in case we do get one.
Okay, I'm assuming the funding would be coming from the charter school at that point, not the Pinellas County School Board.
That's kind of seeming to be the future, but, you know, that's one of the scenarios in the future. But that's going to be on the talking block probably for the next six months or.
Okay, I just.
I'd like to answer that because I know that very well.
Okay.
The, the charter schools are public schools, so actually it comes out of the Pinellas County School System.
So, okay. All right. I just want to make sure that we're not just surprised by a couple charter schools that might show up in August or September and that.
There's nothing in.
Right now, it's looking like they're going to be part of this, of this, of the, the expansion of the Pinellas County School System and stuff right now, the way it is. But again, they're still, it's still in, in talks and stuff, so. I think they're going to be most of the ones presently to start with, and then you just need to see where it goes. We just need to see where it goes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion.
Motion to approve second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Lahusis?
Yes, thank you. Next item is another addendum number two, Mr. Retified Appointment of Building Development Director, Mr. Licorice.
Yes, pursuant of the charter, I'm very happy to report to you, after all this time and a lot of looking, that I'd like to appoint Kevin Powell as the Building Development Director. You can see from the, from what we gave you, he has the background and all the things we need in the position. I think myself and Bob Robertson, who, who was involved along with, with Vician Building and all of us in this search, we knew from the start that this is one of the toughest positions for cities to fill across the state of Florida. And especially here, we had to have the right combination. We had to have everything that's in this application, the technical stuff. But we also had to have the people person. And, you know, we've had someone look some that maybe had the technical, but the fit for Tarpon for, for looking to help the citizen that comes in and that kind of, that was going to be the criteria. And how long is we're going to go? We're going to go until we find that person. I'm very convinced. And Bob can tell you from him dealing with them, with me talking to him and, and getting that, that he is the type of person who can come here, who will, who will help to try to get the citizens or whatever they're trying to do there, if he can get it done legally. He is just a personable guy that has all the qualifications we need. From graduating, I think his last kid from school, they wanted to move back, and this to be their last home from the Jacksonville, Putnam County area where he's been working since two thousand and three. The reason this appealed to him is this is the area where he's got family, and they plan upon graduations to move back to. So this is someone who wants to move here, saw this, and he sure meet everything, meets everything we're looking for. And I'm glad we got the background and everything done so I could get it on tonight with the addendum because I didn't want to wait till the twelfth. I want to, I want to get him going and to give his notice and to, to plan on, on coming here to be our, our building official. So I think this is the right choice, and it'll be right for Tarpon Springs.
Mr. Licorice, I had the opportunity to look at his resume. It's very impressive. He's very well qualified, and I'm looking forward to see our building department to get to the higher level. It is something that we need more emphasis there. So yes, I am in favor to see this guy to start working soon. I haven't got a chance to meet him, and I'm sure he, you're going to give us the opportunity to get to know him.
Yes.
But yes, I think it's the department that we need to put more emphasis to it. So, thank you. Commission K.
Thank you. And I, I did too. I went through his credentials, and I was very impressed. And he's on his job, his current job quite a long time. So he's not, you know, he's, like I said, he's just got great credentials, and I think he's going to be a good fit in our city. Hopefully, we can set up an appointment just to meet him and, you know, kind of get to know him more personal.
Each of you, we will set up that with, with each of you.
And who, who interviewed him?
It was, it was Bob Robertson, Vicky from Billings, who was the, Dave Gilson, who's the, who's the lead inspector, head inspector, and myself.
Well, I trust Bob's good, very much. So, I mean, you know, he's a true asset. So I'm looking forward to it. We, yeah, we need to move that department in a, in a positive direction, and I welcome him aboard.
And we're feverishly looking for the inspectors we lost, too. So hopefully we can, we can get that department. But again, throughout the state and throughout the cities, private enterprises going after building officials, inspectors, and they're, they're just, you know, throwing tremendous amount of money at them that they can't refuse to go. So right now, cities around the state are really having trouble and, and with hiring the inspectors and especially with hiring a building official. So I think we're lucky, and we're lucky he's relocating for what he says is his last move, and he wants to come to this area. And it works out good because I say he's been job since two thousand and three. This is because he's ready to make his last move and with his kids graduating. So it seems like a perfect fit, so.
Commission Seber.
Well, we are lucky that he wants to come here because we, we definitely need him. And looking at his credentials, he has licensing, and it looks like he's continued his education throughout his career and even went to warrant officer training and is working on a final degree that he graduates next year from St. Leo. So it looks good, and I'm looking forward to meeting him, and thank you for finding him, whoever found him.
Commissioner Carr.
Thank you. The building department is a very, very important department, and I know, Mark, I've pressed you a few times on what the status is of the applicant. Right now, we are obviously in a building boom. A lot of people with the neighborhoods going on and with redevelopment. And so we want to be able to encourage that as much as we can. So thanks for getting a qualified applicant in here to fill this position and looking forward for the city to move forward in having a better, let's say, face amongst the contractors and builders because it's kind of been a, a black eye for some time, based on what I've heard in the community and out and about amongst the professional world. So looking forward to hearing that turnaround and it becoming a better place to work with the city Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Banther.
Yes, thank you. And obviously, I assume this individual has the needed credentials that won't cause problems with the last record. That's already done, settled, not in school, not in process.
No, sir. Got them all.
Okay. And I echo the whole, the whole, the whole board's comments, and especially Commissioner Carr, that this is a customer service department. And I, and, and I have seen improvements, I think, in, 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 in the, in the last six months, both in my personal interaction. And, and they don't get special treatment there. I'll just tell you that. I've been, I've been declined there just for, for the, for the public record. So they don't give special treatment and, and which they shouldn't. And, but I have seen, I have seen a turn in that tide. I want to credit Bob and you for helping lead that in, in, in that department. I hope this individual will, will continue that because, you know, that department and the courts department are the two that interact most with, with the city as far as city hall here goes. So they need to be not only proficient in, in what they do with buildings and inspections, but, but, but in customer service as well. So I hope to see the continued improvement in that area, and I'm very happy that we found somebody that'll come work here and has their credentials from the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Lahusis?
Yes, thank you. And we're now going to addendum number three, which is the award bid eighteen zero one sixteen BJJ West Winds, Grassy Point Residential Reclaim Water Distribution System retrofit. Mr. Licorice.
Yes, Bob Robertson. Yes, um, Bob Robertson will give the presentation.
Thanks, Mark. Um, Bob Robertson, Project Administration Department Director. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Public Services Department to request your approval to award the construction contract for the West Winds and Grassy Point Reclaim Water Distribution Project. The low bidder is a reputable contractor that we've worked with successfully before, so I was pleased to see them come in as the low bid. Uh, this project will provide the ability to connect over three hundred new reclaim water customers in these two neighborhoods. Um, by comparison and for scale, uh, we currently have about a thousand reclaim water customers in our system, so potentially a thirty percent increase in our reclaim water customer base. So this is a pretty big project for us. This project is cooperatively funded by the Southwest Florida Water Management District, providing nearly three hundred thousand dollars in grant funding for the construction phase as a reimbursement. Uh, construction will be completed primarily using horizontal directional drill methods to hopefully minimize disruption to the neighborhoods to the best of our ability. And the project is expected to take about nine months to complete.
I think go a little bit more into, I think that's important, is a little more money, but as we've learned in the past for disruption, tell a little bit about that difference and why we're paying a little more money to do it that way for the neighborhoods.
Sure thing. Um, so the the horizontal directional drill does cost a little bit more money, but obviously we want to try to minimize disruption to three hundred homes um during construction. Um, nobody wants a big construction project in their front yard, certainly for a long period of time. So that's one thing. And the other thing is, I think Mark is alluding to is we also included an additive alternate into this bid and we accepted it. Um, this alternate was to mill and resurface uh the roadway. And when you do a horizontal directional drill, you have to cut big holes in the road and then you patch them back up. Well, we didn't want to leave behind a patchwork of asphalt behind, um, as my mom always taught me, um, leave it better than you've found it. So that's what we want to try to do. Um, so that's what that that's what that comes in. We're gonna be milling and resurfacing about sixty-five percent of all the roadway surface area because we're gonna be impacting that much of it. Um, and that's what the part of the additional cost covers.
Bob, thank you. Thank you for all your work in this presentation as well. Uh, I'm glad that we're going to be able to provide reclaim water service to three hundred and ten people of the area. Um, and also we're going to restore the street. We're gonna repay the streets, so we're gonna we're all not, it will, it's gonna look very nice. But can you tell us a little bit about the grant that we're gonna get from the state? Because this is very important for people to know, that some of the funding is actually coming from the state.
That's right, and I'll reiterate that point. Thank you, Mayor. The uh, the Water Management District has a grant funding program for projects that um build reclaimed water infrastructure. And in this case, we were eligible for almost three hundred thousand dollars that will be reimbursed back to us as the project construction goes forward.
So we'll be able to repay the payment for Pinellas?
We'll be able to repay, yeah, three hundred thousand dollars of the project budget. Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Any commission comments? Commissioner Kikta?
Thank you. Um, Mark, isn't this, it's West Winds, isn't that what Mr. Goen was fighting for all these years?
Yes.
Yeah, so he's hopefully he's watching. Um.
Please hold his house to move.
I know, before it got done.
But at least he was happy.
Thought for this for so many years.
Yes, he did.
And so happy to see that this is finally coming to fruition and um they'll be able to have reclaimed out there. That is a big development in West Winds, so um I'm happy to see that it's finally uh going to happen for all of them out there and I appreciate everybody's work on this because I, like I said, I know it was uh uh being worked on for a long time. So I'm so happy to see this get started. Thank you.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Banther?
No comments, thank you.
No comment?
No comment.
No comment?
I've got a couple.
Okay. Commissioner Carr?
Thank you. Is there a, when you go to hook up to this, is there a fee to hook up?
Yes, there's a uh forty dollar deposit and a three hundred dollar meter charge.
Okay. Um, are the, so these are both like private neighborhoods, right? So is it are they private roads or they city roads?
They're city roads.
They are city roads?
They are.
Okay. Thanks for uh bringing this forward. I guess it it would have a an impact on our water demand, I would think, too.
Well, that's one of the main reasons why the Water Management District provides cooperative funding. Because they want to reduce the demands on the water side by encouraging reclaimed water irrigation instead of potable water. So absolutely, we'll we'll help our reduce our demands.
Just don't mix it up on which one goes in the house. Don't mix it up. Thank you.
Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? Chair will detain the motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
In roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus.
Yes, thank you. And now we're going to the item number nine, which is the ordinance two thousand eighteen dash twelve Land Development Code Amendment to section forty-one dot zero-three Stormwater, this is the first reading, and I'll see the attorney will read the order.
Ordinance number twenty eighteen dash twelve, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida. amend the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code of the City of Tarpon Springs as follows. Appendix A, Article Nine, Section One Forty-one point zero-three Stormwater retrofit allowing an exception for development of additional gross floor area over existing impervious surfaces. Providing for modifications that may arise at public hearing, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith. Providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code of ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. Are there uh staff report?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Heather earlier Planning and Zoning Director and staff for this application. Um, this application is a modification to um your stormwater section specifically to the stormwater retrofit section. Essentially, it addresses um redevelopment projects for the most part. Projects that want to add additional square footage over existing impervious surface area currently have to go through a full-on analysis to prove that they have not degraded, um, they're not degrading the level of service for stormwater on their site. The issue with that is it's it's very cumbersome for the applicant to do that. It becomes a very expensive process um to prove that your your stormwater system essentially is functioning. Stormwater systems, when they come online um and are developed here um through the swift mud process, is they're permitted. As part of that permit process, all impervious surfaces are calculated in the pond, okay? So any any water that falls on that site is calculated either through some type of conduit system or to move into into the stormwater pond or into some other facility. Because of that, because of that ERP permit and because we're already accounting for the water that would normally fall on that site, somebody wanting to put a building over top of an existing parking lot, say, it there's no additional impact really to the stormwater system. The impact is a velocity impact where the water that actually is coming off a building may may be moving off the site faster, but that can actually be controlled through the guttering system um and through other conveyance systems. So it's not that the volume of water um necessarily changes, it's more of the velocity of the water. How far, how fast it moves across the site. So as a result, we've um been looking at this issue with at least one a one site and we have a couple other sites that this potentially could be an issue on. Big areas where somebody wants to put a put a building on and as a result, we've put and put together some language here where we have them evaluate the system, prove that they are in compliance with their bill with their permit for their um state and local permits, which is an easier lift than proving your entire system is working, that's an existing system. So that's what we're looking to do is to amend the code to provide really exemption for these types of projects so that they're not going through a full-on stormwater analysis. Instead, they're doing a more modified um look and proving that their system exists as exists is functioning. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
Any commission comment, question?
Just a quick question. Does this like pertain if you want to add like a patio or decking to a building also, or is that just like actual like square footage that you add?
It it would be if it's over an existing hard surface, the answer is yes. If it's over um a green surface or a surface that already allows water to penetrate, then no. In that case, you would have to account for that additional square footage, but usually patios are small and there's what's called a de minimis impact and you can go through that de minimis project to account for those smaller for those smaller impacts. This is really specifically for the big, big projects that are, you know, putting something over an existing parking area or something like that, or vaulting a system or something like that to that effect.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Are there any public comments on this item? Here none? I will detain the motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozus.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is number ten, to affirm firefighter's venture trust fund appointments. This is straightforward and we have two letters that we need to address. One is to affirm uh the Mr. James Mariani and Mr. Andrew Khan to serve another term. And the other request is to affirm that uh the reappointment of Mr. Carlton Howard. Any comments, question? Are there any public comments on this item? I need a motion to.
Second.
In roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor LaHoozus.
Yes, thank you. Well, that concludes the uh regular session agenda tonight and we go to staff comments.
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
City Attorney, thank you for being here tonight with us.
It's my pleasure as always. No comments this evening.
City Manager?
As a lot of you know, we had a major water break of a twenty-inch main at Florida and Mir's, which in essence probably knocked out the water to most of the west side of Tarpon. Um, they are on site now. It's a major fix. Obviously, our crews and of course, that's why we have somebody on emergency contract. Um, they're out there to assist us. So we will be working and thank goodness this weather is coordinating. They will be working through the night. Um, the hope is to get it up by when people are waking up to take their showers and go in the morning, but right now it's anticipated it'll be out most of the night and and hopefully there's there's no other things that happen to do it, but it could be tomorrow morning or later, but the crews will be there and again, they will be all night working to try to restore that water. Um, and that's the best, until they get in there and get going, um, we don't know, but you know, they're committed to work through the night and again, our hope is when people are waking up, the pressure and the water will be restored. If at all possible, that is the goal that that everybody's gonna achieve to do. Sooner, of course, but again, this was a major line, a major break. Um, so we'll have more details of what caused it, but um again, um, hopefully we'll get it up as soon as possible. I know myself, Commissioner Banther aren't gonna have water when we get back home, but um again, the crews are out there and will work through the night to try to restore water as soon as possible.
Thank you. Madam Senator Clark?
Okay.
Go first. Commissioner Kikta?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Um, I just wanted to congratulate the class of two thousand eighteen and wish everybody the best of luck in their futures and um our county lost uh had has a big loss uh right now. Um, County Commissioner, um, Mr. Maroney has passed away with his long fight to cancer and I want to send my condolences to his family as well as to uh his board members. And um, again, don't forget um Memorial Day at eleven o'clock Craig Park, uh, we have our ceremony. Um, more Memorial Day ceremony and then the Elks Lodge will be sponsoring lunch afterward at park. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. And yes, that is sad for the loss of our county commissioner. I I I I believe he was Clearwater, right, Mark? Was it Clearwater District, uh, Commissioner Maroney?
I think it was. He was uh south. He was from Treasure Island.
Treasure Island. Well, that's, I know, I think he started this, I mean, when we went for the dredge like three years ago, he was already being absent, so I think it was a long fight, so hope his memory is eternal. Um, I hope we have water in the morning because I have PSTA. I don't think they want to see an unshowered David Banther, but um I'll survive. But also, no, it's also note that people need to have water on hand. Not just during hurricane season, but year round. I keep like fifty gallons at my house, which I know is excessive, but I'm crazy. But it just people need to keep water because like everyone's going from sun to the hills to go buy water at Windexian Publix, well, they're 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 gonna run out, so. Just a reminder to keep water on hand year round. It's not it it it's not just for hurricanes. Um, and I also want to congratulate Commissioner Carr and his wife. They're expecting going to Facebook. Some very clever announcements I saw. I always like to watch people do that and you can have a though um a a a a a girl, correct?
Yes.
So, well, I um, I've done that twice and you'll have fun with that, so. Congrats, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Vice Mayor. Uh, I did have the privilege to attend a honoring or retirement party for Coach Malvin at the Tarpon Springs Fundamental this past Saturday. Had a lot of people from the community there. Uh, he was one of my coaches growing up. Uh, and he really made an impact in my life, in my sister's lives. Uh, he's one of those guys that just had a big smile when you came in, big smile as he is in the car line calling your name when your mom or dad was there to pick you up, so. Uh, it's it's sad to see him go, but it's great to see him go on to the next chapter of his life and are looking forward to the next generation that's gonna step up and help serve uh with our growing uh kids in this community. Um, so, thank you.
Well, thanks for the update, Mark, because while I was sitting here, I got a a text from a citizen asking me when that water line would be repaired, so now I can answer her. Um, so that's great news. Um, I also want to offer my condolences to um County Commissioner, uh, John Maroney. He, it was a ten-year battle. Uh, and uh, he will be missed and I'm sure that his colleagues will miss him as well, so um my condolences to his family.
Thank you. Well, today has been a very difficult day for us. We actually lost twenty-four people in our community. I'd like to extend my condolences to the family of the Police Sergeant Pogno for the passing of their son, Mark. Uh, his memory, may his memory be eternal. Also, as everybody has stated about John Maroney, who just passed away. John Maroney was a friend of mine before he was the County Commissioner. He was still the uh state representative when I was the manager in St. Petersburg. I had the St. Petersburg area and I got to know him very well. He was a lovely person and he was um uh, an excellent guy, a great server to Pinellas County. And I had the opportunity several times to have lunch with him over here in Tarpon Springs. Love to visit Tarpon Springs because his mom used to work here in the city hall. So, we're gonna miss him. Some other things that I'd like to uh announce that uh May twenty-six, Saturday, May twenty-six, we have the Soul Soul and Sponge Ducks and that starts at six P M.
Unless it's canceled.
Unless it's raining.
Due to weather.
Oh, really? And also June first, Friday, June first, we have the first Friday and that starts also at six P M. The weather's gonna be good by then.
Oh.
Uh, June seven, we have the Sunset Beach Concert that starts at seven P M. And Friday, June eighth through uh Sunday through ten, we have the Opa Palusa at the Sponge Ducks. Is that a new event?
No, it's about the third year now that
Yeah.
we've had this.
What Palusa stands for? What is that?
Well, it's like a party, you know, it was kind of my idea, Opa Palusa a few years ago. You know, like other Palusa. But it's a it's a fun event.
But um, yeah, I also like to welcome the new businesses to uh Tarpon Springs, the Royal Healing, Spartan Energy Solutions and Kevin Custom. Woodworking. And since we have, uh, since we received a request to schedule, to reschedule the B O C meetings, it was a great opportunity for me being as a part of the assisted city program to travel to Athens to meet with the Greek Minister uh Minister of Education, hoping that we're gonna bring more uh teachers, uh Greek teachers here to Tampa Bay area to teach Greek as a second language. And I will be returning before the next B O C meeting, so I'm not gonna lose any any meeting. And as always, it will be, I will be paying for my expense, so. I want to make sure that everybody understands that and that concludes our regular session meeting tonight and it's adjourned at seven fifty-six P M. Good night, everybody. Good night, everybody.
Give my best brief. I have to pray those holy.